Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Middletown Planning Board, May 7, 2025 meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Sorry for the later start, we had some technical difficulties. All right, a little housekeeping first for our transcriptionist. We have one board member absent this evening, Richard McCormick. Our building inspector is also absent this evening, Sexto Martinez. All their board members are present. Mr. Guadere, our fire inspector, is present, and Mr. Richard Krogan, our planning board attorney, is present. First of all, anyone that's here this evening for the first time, first-time applicant appearances are considered a preliminary hearing, and the planning board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. First on our agenda, approval of the April 2, 2025 minutes. I will need a motion, Mr. Madden, second, Mr. Britto. Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Mr. Britto.
Yes.
Ms. Witt.
Yes.
Ms. Houston.
Yes.
Mr. Higbee.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Moving on, under the agenda, we have Michelle Severino, 5 South Street, multi-purpose event artisan workshop, eating and drinking establishment. Please step forward to the mic, please.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. It's very, it's very nice to be here, and I'm looking forward to telling you about what I have planned for Middletown.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Michelle Severino.
Thank you, now you can...
Also known as The Wizard.
The Wizard.
And we'll get to that. So, the name of the shop that I'm opening is called The Wizard of Dolls, and that's D-O-L-L-Z, for my love of The Wizard of Oz and dolls. I have been a doll aficionado since early childhood, as you see the handouts that I gave you. My career also spans over 25 years as an artist for the doll industry, and then eventually I became a doll doctor. In essence, I do restoration work. So, I've been in dolls all my life. At 64-years-old, dolls are still everything to me. I am the current president of the Hudson Valley Doll Club, which is Region 14 of a much larger organization called the United Federation of Doll Clubs. I've been actively working as a doll doctor for the last, I don't know, 15 years or so. The doll industry's changed a lot over the many years. Mostly, I was a doll designer for the porcelain doll industry, but porcelain dolls sadly are not what they used to be, and people don't really collect them anymore. And it's sad, because as you go to many estate sales, you'll see all these beautiful porcelain dolls that once cost a lot of money, but don't anymore. But anyways, regardless of that, I have been passionate about dolls, and one of the things for me has always been this, almost magical for me. And if anyone remembers going through the old Sears Wish Book catalog, the Christmas catalog, right, fighting with your siblings over who gets that book next to be able to circle off those special toys that you want. And for me, many of my childhood dolls came from those Christmas catalogs, or being taken to the toy store for my birthday, or special event, or holiday. And so, because I, I didn't want to come empty-handed, I have, and those of you that are in my age range, this is my special, special doll from my childhood. She is an ideal newborn Thumbelina, and I see a lot of smiley faces over here. She was broken and did not work anymore, but she's been repaired. So, she's meant to be squirmy like a little newborn. This was, may I come in, or not come in? Can I show, come here and show her?
Sure.
Okay. So, you can see how she squirms. And this was, and she came with a little, these are her original pajamas and her name bracelet, but my absolute, see the smiles? Now, I'm going to tell you that there are huge amount of men that collect dolls. My vice president is a man. We just had a new member join who collects high-end fashion dolls, and, you know, these are just childhood, and these bring back so much wonderful memories. Now, one of the things about doing this shop is to be able to show the history of dolls, to talk about the art behind the doll, because the other thing is that people, you know, they just, instant gratification, right? Oh, I'm gonna go on Amazon, I'm gonna go to Walmart, I'm gonna go get a doll. But what I teach is the concept. Where does the doll come from? It's not just that you go to the store, there's somebody like me behind that doll, which means, as an artist, I sketched my concept, I sculpted my pieces in clay, I made plaster molds, I cast them, I fired them, I made the bodies, I painted everything, and made a complete doll. I'm gonna just let you guys cast her, this is one of my originals. She's made porcelain doll.
Why'd I ever get yelled at like that?
So, one of the things, I know it says down eatery there, it's not that it's an eatery, but I will be, hope, having kids come in for lectures, or seminars, or to be able to talk about dolls, so I want to be open to, you know, the youth of Middletown, as well as Girl Scouts, Brownies, anything like that. So, if I have, like, you know, juice boxes, or cookies, or something, you know, packaged, I'm not selling anything, but obviously, I had to put it on there, but I do want to be able to have that for the kids if they come in. The other thing is, you know, doing the education on dolls, and not only that, but teaching kids how to care for their doll. Right, thank you. How to care for their doll as well, which is really important to me, to bring that education in as well, as well as it will be retail, and it's not retail of new dolls. I, I acquire estates, I acquire, I help other people with their estates if a loved one has passed. So, my collection, or the shop, will have everything from antiques to modern contemporary dolls. And that's really what I'm doing, is more, I want to educate in the community and be part of the community. One of my goals is to start a junior doll club for kids, and then, you know, to bring more of that involvement in, into the community as well.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about this?
Well, we'll get to that.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Then I'm gonna open the public hearing. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing?
No.
Anyone on the phone?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna open up to the public. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. Okay, I'll go to the board members for any questions, comments, or concerns. Ms. Witt?
So, I noticed you have a workshop in the back. Do you need, does it need, maybe Mr. Guadere can assist, do you need a hood at all, like an air hood, if you're doing, working, like for exhaust?
Oh, no, no, there's nothing like that, there's no, there's no flames, there's no...
Exhaust, or anything?
No, no, nothing like that at all. No, I don't have killing, there's no, those days are long over.
Okay, that was my next question, like, are you going to be...
Yep, nope, nothing like that at all.
Okay, so it's just going to be parts of dolls that you're going to be putting together?
So, when I get, usually, I'm repairing, like, American Girl dolls, for instance. Their arms get real floppy, and their legs get floppy. Instead of sending them to American Girl and paying a lot of money, they bring them to me, and I can repair the American Girl doll. So, it's really just cleaning, and then restringing, and restuffing, so nothing, nothing major.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ms. Houston?
Just a question about, if you're assembling groups of children, which I think it's lovely, I'm a retired teacher myself, will the children be supervised by their parents?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, parents have to, I much prefer, or a group leader, like a school, if a school teacher, or somebody came in, no, not the kids by themselves, they have to be supervised.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't gonna fall under the definition of school.
No, no, not at all. It would be like if a Brownie girl group, or a Girl Scout group, or say, even a class wanted to come in for, like, a career thing, and talk about, like, the dolls, because I've gone to the schools and talked about that in the past.
Beautiful, thank you.
Yeah, just to mention, too, that the, the paper did do an article on me in 2011, because I lectured at the Thrall Library. It's called Hello, Dolly. So, you can look that up, too, it's online.
Anyone else from the board? Mike, any concerns?
None at this time. I met with the applicant, we did a site visit, I reviewed the floor plan, and thank you for explaining the processing and further.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'll have you in, too, because I am gonna update all the fire extinguishers and stuff, too, as well.
Yeah, we'll do a six-toe and myself, we'll do a site visit prior to you opening.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public wishing to address this application, please step forward? None coming forward. I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Madden, second, Ms. Houston, all in favor?
Aye.
That being said, public hearing is closed. I'll go to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. None being had, we'll move on to the resolution for 5 South Street, multi-purpose event artisan workshop and eating and drinking establishment. I need a motion. Ms. Witt, I need a second. Mr. Higbee, discussion? Roll call, Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, Vicky Arred, 12 North Street, adding beer and wine to an existing eating and drinking establishment. Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name for the record, please.
Vicky Andrade.
And what do you plan on doing?
I'd like to seek permission to add beer and wine. I own Art Vicky Creations, which is on 10 North Street. We recently expanded, and we opened up Tranquility. It's a studio, I've actually had it for a year and a half, but I teach a lot of painting classes, and craft classes, all kinds of things, and a lot of people have expressed interest in bringing beer and wine, or having beer and wine there, and I'd like permission for that, please.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes, we do.
Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing?
No.
Anyone on the phone?
No.
In that case, if anyone here wishing to address this application, please step forward. Okay, I'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Mike? Mike, any issues?
None at this time. We'll be meeting with the applicant to review occupancy and other conforms, but everything has to be within the fire code before anything moving forward.
No problem.
Also, with the SLA and their requirements, and the board health.
Okay.
Okay, that being said, I'll go back to the public one more time. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one stepping forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I need a motion. Ms. Witt, I need a second. Mr. Britto, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing being closed, I will go back to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. None being had, I'll go to the resolution for 12 North Street, adding beer and wine to an existing eating and drinking establishment. Discussion, excuse me, I need a motion. Mr. Britto, second.
You already had it.
Okay, I only got two now. I don't want to forget anything. Okay, discussion. That being said, roll call, Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Can I say, Mr. Higbee? Even my name is...
Yeah, well, I'm gonna have to redo.
Next on the agenda, Brooke Jones, 138 and 1/2 Wickham Avenue, convenience store.
Good evening.
Good evening. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Brooke Jones.
And what do you plan on doing?
I plan on opening up a convenience store, selling beer, wine, cigarettes, tobacco products, hats, scarves, you know, dog food, cat food, little, you know, convenience items, sodas, juices, chips, things of that nature.
Okay, fine. Ms. Two, do we have any, have the mailings?
Yes.
Then I'm gonna open the public hearing. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing?
Nothing in writing.
Anyone on the phone?
No.
Then I'm gonna go to the public. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one stepping forward, I'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Ms. Witt? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Witt?
Hi. What will be your hours of operation? Oh, sorry, I see it right here, eight to 10 daily? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, it may be a little later, maybe nine to 10, but it will close at 10 o'clock.
Okay.
It may open a little bit later, but it will close at 10 every night.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
She mentioned before about some liquor, or beer, might do it to add, or do we have it in the resolution? Just a moment.
It's in the resolution.
It is?
Yeah.
Great, you said you'd check on something. I'm gonna make sure our resolution is complete, that's all.
Okay.
All right, got it, thanks.
Mr. Guadere, any concerns?
I'd just like to advise the applicant that in the city of Middletown, prior to opening, the Bureau of Fire Prevention is gonna need a business permit filled out. If you're intending to sell tobacco, or any tobacco products, the DPW is going to need a tobacco permit, as well as, if it's a business and signs, the signs are gonna have to, or will need to have a sign permit, and they can't block more than 50% of the windows. And if you're intending on selling alcohol, I don't know if that's in the resolution or not, but you'll also need approval with the SLA.
Okay.
So, please contact my office and the DPW prior to doing anything. I know that it was a bookstore prior to this, so if there's any construction going on, or anything, you're gonna need to get a building permit through the DPW.
Okay.
Plumbing, electrical, have to be done by licensed electrician, licensed plumber, within the city of Middletown.
Okay.
That's all.
Mr. Guadere, for the record, it does provide in the resolution for SLA approval, and also for tobacco, that the applicant must obtain from the city of Middletown, the tobacco license, so that is in the resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the board? Go back to the public one more time. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one stepping forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. I need a motion to do that. Ms. Houston, second, Mr. Madden, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing has been closed. I'll go to the board one more time. Questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, Mr. Madden?
Do you plan on preparing any food to eat, sandwiches, or the such?
Like croissants, little bakery items, but no cooking will be involved at all.
And no baking on premise?
No baking on the premises.
Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion. Mr. Britto, second, Ms. Witt, discussion? Yes, sir?
One more question?
Yes.
Any CBD, CBD, or...
No.
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 Thank you.
District Lee cigarettes and tobacco.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, 74 to 82 Erwin Avenue, Attending Home Care Services LLC office.
Good afternoon, my name is Jadele Rojas, for the record, and I am the recruiter for Orange County for attending home care, and I'm here to, I guess, present the information, and answer any questions on what we will be doing there.
Okay.
Now, first, if I could, I prepared our information, our hiring information, and our company information and bags, can the young lady, Sarah, approach?
Sure, wanna share it with us?
Yes.
Please.
And this is Sarah, my daughter and my assistant in recruitment, for the last three years, of course, you know, voluntarily, not really, she gets paid, she's hired.
Careful what you say, you're on the record.
Perfect. A college student.
How are you?
Good, good, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Great, oh, thank you.
This is some way...
Thank you.
My second job, my third job, my fourth job, oh, bear.
The little round blue things are not stress balls, don't throw them at anyone, they're shaved butter lip balms, they're amazing. Just, just putting it out there. See, yeah, it's a thing.
Okay, that being said, Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
Great, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Do we have anything in writing, Ms. Two? No one on the phone? Okay, gonna open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. None coming forward, I'll go to the board for questions, comments, or concerns.
What are you exactly doing there?
Okay, we are a home health agency, so people walk in and say, hey, I need services for my mom, what can you do for me, or hi, I'd like to work in home care. Some people come to us already with their home health aid training, or personal care aid training. If they do not have it, then I help them get the training, either in Spanish or English, weekdays or weeknights. I send them to schools in different areas to kind of accommodate for their personal schedule, if they already have jobs. And again, we provide services to patients, so people can walk in and tell us they need help, and we'll sit them down with a marketer, who will help them find out what insurance they have, because most people do not know how their insurance works, and what they're entitled to through their insurance, and most people don't have enough insurance that are retired, and need services at home, so we have someone that deals with that. Then we have our HR processor, two of them, already hired from here in Middletown, local girls, and they will help the aides that I bring in be processed, so medicals, IDs, everything that has to do with their background checks goes through HR. Once they're completed, and let's say they already have their training, HR fully processes them, will have orientation, hopefully, once we get up and running once a week, it can be anywhere between one to five or six girls, because we like to do it very personal. I do part of it, and HR does the other part, and then we send them off to patients' homes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public? Like to close the public hearing? Need a motion, Mr. Britto, second, Ms. Houston, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing has been closed. I'll go to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. Yes, Mr. Madden?
How much space of this building are you occupying? Are you taking the entire building, or is the dance school still there?
No, from the notes that I see here, the dance studio is still upstairs. I'm not sure if they gave you the layout, but, so we'll have, I've never, I have not been in the building yet, I'm sorry, I only know it from the junior high school angle, and so we'll have this whole floor plan you see here.
Okay.
We'll be using each room for something different. So, one is for conferencing, one is a classroom, so when you have orientations, the girls must sit there with a nurse, must sit there with HR, to be taught how to clock in, clock out, what to do with certain patients. Also, in order to keep your licenses, your certificates from the DOH active, you must take in services. So, we, it's a refresher three to four times a year, and the rest will be my storage space for the materials you just received, that kind of thing, my tents, my chairs, my desk, you know, that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Ms. Witt?
Hi, so you are an equal opportunity employer?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so you're mentioning just girls, I just wanted...
Oh, no, we have lots of men.
Yes, okay.
There are patients that will only accept men.
You're open, you're open to all, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Question, comments, or concerns? Okay.
Mr. Guadere, did you have anything?
Just, for the record, this is an HR, more an administrative office than a treatment facility?
Oh, no patients can come in there?
This is not a patient facility, it will not be in the future, or anything like that?
Cannot.
Okay.
Insurance will not pay for it, it must be out of their homes.
Right, so that's what we need to make sure is in the record?
Oh, of course.
That this is not a patient facility?
No.
This is an HR admin training office?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything, anyone else? All right, discussion, roll call, Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
You didn't, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
You didn't put the motion before.
I didn't?
No.
Aye, 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 okay. Motion for Ms. Houston, second, Mr. Britto. Okay, now we can have the discussion again, and now we'll call for the roll again. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes, thank you.
I'm glad this is almost over. Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good thing you're paying attention. Next on the agenda, Haisham Jamal, 366 to 368 North Street, grocery slash deli. Good evening.
How are you, buddy? My name is Sean Jamal.
Getting better by the minute. Your name for the record again, please?
Haisham Jamal.
And what do you plan on doing?
Deli and grocery, tobacco.
Ms. Two, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Anyone on the phone? I'm gonna move to the public. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one stepping forward, I'm gonna go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Mr. Guadere, any concerns?
Just for the record, this is the same situation as before with the other convenience store. We need to remind you, my office is going to need a business permit if you intend on selling tobacco. The city now implements a tobacco permit. Signs on the front of the building have to be approved through the DPW with sign permits. The front of the building cannot be altered without approval of this DPW. Again, if you're intending on alcohol or anything, the SLA, any building, construction, anything like that, needs to be done through a building permit, and any plumbing or electric need to be licensed through the city of Middletown. You're not approved to open until my office and the DPW issue all necessary permits. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Guadere, in the resolution, there is no eating, drinking, where, will not be served, where liquor, beer, wine, and any other alcohol beverage will not be served, so the applicant is not seeking it at this time, and cannot sell it.
No.
Received, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Witt?
Is there a mention of tobacco?
There is, in the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Britto, you had a question?
Yeah, the lights that you have on there, do they go off at a certain time during the night, when you're closed?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. They definitely get your attention, but...
Yeah, they get attention.
I just want to mention to the board that convenience stores, delis, things of those nature that we're approving going forward, always have in the resolution about the SLA and the tobacco. We've included it in everyone, whether they plan on doing it or not, we're stating in the resolution for the record that they have to obtain those things if they are going to serve those things. Okay, just so you know, going forward. All right? Anyone else? Go back to the public. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one's coming forward, I will close the public hearing, and I'll go back to the board. I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Britto, second. Ms. Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing...
I just wanted to ask, is this is part of the DMU on 366?
This?
No, okay.
It's not.
Okay.
No.
I know you made a comment about how the bright lights, I'm not sure if anybody has seen it, but I, I know I'm not a fan of the lights.
Oh, I, it was too dark at night, so I put light just for the night.
These are the ones that go all the way around the window frames?
Yeah.
I mean...
He will have to meet.
There's a switch.
Okay, he'll have to meet.
Yeah, he'll have to meet, that's why Mr. Guadere was very specific about signage in the exterior and the facade.
Okay.
He has to get approvals for everything that goes on the exterior of his building.
And the current lighting situation?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They'll deal with him, yes. Okay?
Perfect.
All right. That being said, I'm looking for discussion, I'm looking for a roll call.
Motion.
Oh, Jesus. Mr. Britto, motion. Second. Mr. Madden? Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck, sir. Next on the agenda, Humberto Calero, 28 to 32 County Highway 78.
Second call it?
This is the first call.
Yep.
Yep, we'll wait, okay. Then we're going to move on to Sergio Akala, 203 North Street, Eating and Drinking Establishment. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Your name, sir?
My name is Saul Fajardo, I'm talking with my brother Sergio, he's right there. I speak a better English than him, so...
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, well, our plan is to open a taco place, and this, and that's it, no alcohol, just, just to pick it up, not for the eating.
Gotcha, good. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Two, do we have anyone in writing? Anyone on the phone? Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. No one coming forward, I'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Mr. Guadere, any concerns?
None at this time. I've met with the applicant, I've done a site visit, and he has, they have been very compliant and very helpful during this entire application.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll go back to the public one more time. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. I need a motion. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Ms. Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing being closed, I will move to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. Yes, Mr. Madden?
2:00 AM is an allowable closing time in this zone?
DMU, yes, and the start time is going to be 6:00 AM, and Friday and Saturday will be 2:00 AM, and Sunday through Thursday will be 12:00 midnight. That is by the DMU.
And this is, must just make it into the DMU?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions from the board? All right, we're going to call for a motion for 203 North Street Eating and Drinking Establish, Mr. Madden, second by Ms. Houston, discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck, sir.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, second call. Humberto Calero, 28 to 32 Highway 78, Skin Spa. Going once, going twice.
The applicant did not show. Matter removed.
You're welcome. All right, I apologize for my inconsistency tonight, and I need a motion for adjournment. Mr. Madden, Ms. Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.